Thank you, Leah. All right, this is Tuesday, July 26, and this is the regular reading of the CSD Finance Committee. And with the call to order, please, I'd like to establish a quorum, which we do have, all five members are here, as well as Ms. Duffield and Ms. Fritz, and also. Okay. I just recognized that the hosting was handed over to me, so that's why Leah is no longer here. Okay, fine.
It actually says the host is Mary. On my participants list.
Oh, interesting.
So when I look at my, if you look at your panel on the right-hand side of your screen, it says Mary May her is the host.
Well.
Interesting.
Yes, is there, is there any way that, I mean, Mary, I mean, if you'd like to be the host for this and be bringing people, you know, in and out of conversation as necessary, as far as from, from the attendee list.
About serving orders.
Yeah, not necessarily, but I mean, I can always try, but I would, when I.
There's only one attendee and that attendee can't speak because it's a board member.
Yeah. I'll do it, I'll do it.
Well, let me ask a question first. I mean, how difficult is it to change over and have the hosting duties assigned to me rather than Mary having to bear at the brunt of that?
I can text Haley and ask her.
I might have just done it.
Ah, done. I now am the host. There you go.
There we go, perfect. The technology is your friend, Mary.
Yep, yep, little control here.
Okay, excellent. So back to the business at hand. So we have a quorum established. So in attendance also are Ms. Duffield, Ms. Fritz, and Jim Weigold. So we'll move on to the chairman's report, which I do not have anything additional to the agenda items that we have today. And we move on to the ad hoc subcommittee reports, and as far as I know, we have no outstanding subcommittee reports to address today. And seeing no indication from anyone. Then we'll move on to the committee member communication. So at this point, if any of the committee members have an announcement or want to report briefly on activities or ask a question for clarification, now's the time to do so. So is there, all right, not seeing any from the committee members, we'll move on then to public comment. And again, as you had mentioned, Ms. Duffield, the only attendee is a board member, so we do not have any public comment to take today. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. So does anyone have any corrections or changes, additions, as far as the meeting minutes from the special meeting that took place? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion then for the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Thank you, in a second. Mary, all right. So it's moved by Mr. Corn and seconded by Ms. Maher. And we can move on to the vote. And what I will do is go ahead and record the vote then. So, Mr. Corn. Sharon?
Hi.
What, Ms. Corn? So thank you, Ms. Maher.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Crispin.
Hi.
Ms. McDowell?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Seager.
Since I wasn't present, I'll abstain.
Thank you. All right, the vote is four zero, four yeas, one abstain. Not present at the meeting. Okay. We'll move on to regular business then. And there are two items on our agenda today. The first one in regular business is to review the fourth quarter budget report and staff recommendations. And I'll first ask if there are. Actually, I'll ask to have it introduced first and then bring it back and ask if there are any questions for clarification. So, Ms. Duffield, do you want to introduce this? Or Mr. Weigold, are you going to introduce it?
I'll introduce it. So first off, I'd like to make sure that all the committee members have met the new finance manager Denise Fritz. The first interaction everybody had with Denise was, I think during the joint meeting, but I'm not sure that everybody was present. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was introduced. I think maybe Ted was absent, so
He was.
I just wanted to make a quick introduction again. So everybody, welcome Denise.
Welcome Denise.
Welcome Denise. Okay, so good morning, everyone. So item three A on your agenda is review of the fourth quarter budget report and staff recommendations to take this to the Board of Directors at the second meeting in August. So this, just to give you a little intro, this is something new that we can produce out of the Tyler system. So in the past, if you recall, we were working with the budget and the quarterly report on those Excel spreadsheets. So we could make a comparison of how the year ended versus, you know, what we're doing in the New Year's budget to make that comparison. So the way the Tyler system works, it's a little challenging to get a clean budget report out once we start getting the July actual activity in there. So we figured out a way to go ahead and prepare the fourth quarter report like we've been doing at the first through the third quarter report. And that way you can see budget to actual, how everything's ending budget actual for the year. Additionally, in the report, you'll notice that we've created some Tyler calls them segments. So we can kind of give you little subtotals throughout the report. The revenue is subtotals a lot. So we might think about changing that into not so many subcategories because we have like a subcategory for fees and one for penalties and that might be a little overkill in the revenue side, so we might look at consolidating those a little bit. But definitely on the expenditure side, you can see salaries as a subtotal, you can see benefits as a subtotal. And then the different categories like you're used to seeing within services and supplies, you know, debt service, capital outlay and things like that. So it's just a little different of a format that you've been seeing, and I hope that it's, it's an easier format for you to read. So please, you know, after we're done with the presentation, don't hesitate to give your comments on if it's easier for you to read, if it's not so easy, you know, because, you know, we're still trying to customize the way everybody likes to see these reports. So anyways, that was just a little bit of housekeeping info for you. So three A is the fourth quarter report for fiscal year 2122, which is from July 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 20, excuse me, 2022. Included in this reporting, the board authorized budget adjustments for the consultant services for the section EA seven component of the WRF facility project. And there was some additional budget that was also approved for the zone two to zone seven, the Santa Rosa Creek pedestrian bridge project. We had some contract overages that happened during there and some change orders that were needed. And the board approved those expenditures. And then most recently, we had emergency water line repair project realized with the total project costs as well as addressing the litigation expenses that were in administration for the lawsuit and the litigation expenses. So you will see those as, as we go through these reports. So I don't have the actual packet in front of me because when I left for the day last Thursday, it was still being published, so I don't have the page numbers for you to reference. But I'll fast forward on the three A document to where it says the group summary for the general fund. It's about four or five pages in the document. So the group summary is going to give you and just to remind you all the different columns and what they, what their significance is. Your original budget column is the column that the board approved originally in August of 2021. And then your current total budget column is reflects any changes that have been made throughout the fiscal year. So if you see any differences in there, that is budget adjustments that the board has approved. The period activity is for the month of June only. And your fiscal activity is your July 2021 through June 30, 2022 activity. So that's your going to be your comparison of your total current budget to your fiscal activity. And of course, the difference is your surplus or deficit. And then the last column is your percent remaining. Remember that's remaining, not percent used, percent remaining. So if we fast forward to the fire department. That's a few pages in. You will see all of the activity that has occurred in the fire department budget to actual. We have all of the revenues thus far that have been, that have come in, and we have anticipated some amounts for the safer grant reimbursement that is still in process. And the one thing we still have pending is the final amount from the county for property taxes for the final true-up of the year. So when this actually goes to the board in another couple of weeks, hopefully we'll have that information in there and we'll have those final numbers. This is still kind of in draft based on the timing to get this report to the committee. So if you let's see, it's page three of five of the fire department's budget. You will see at the very end there, you know, that they ended the year currently with a $70,000 surplus. Keep in mind, that doesn't account for any of the activity that has to roll forward into the new year, and we'll be talking about that when we come into the item three B, which is the final budget report. So what we will be carrying forward into the new year will be capital items that were not completed during the fiscal year or ongoing capital projects. Those are the kinds of things we're going to carry forward. Other things would be professional service agreements that weren't complete during the fiscal year as well. So then if we move on to facilities and resources department. Again, page three of five of that packet. It's at the very end, facilities ended up with a surplus of 24,000. I mean, mid 24,000. And again, they'll have, I don't think they had anything to carry forward. I don't think they have any carry forwards this year because they didn't have much capital improvement projects in their budget. Then if we move to Parks and Rec and Open Space. Their budget ending is on page one of three. And so this is where there will be a lot of carry forward in this budget because, as you know, the skate park is still in process as well as the restroom. So you'll see when we talk about the final budget, you'll see the carry forwards for the restroom with the offsetting grant, and you're going to see this, the carry forward of the skate park. And that is currently funded through reserves. Then if we move forward to administration. Administrations and totals are on page three of five in the administration packet. So this has a large deficit, 418,000. Keep in mind, this is due to the recent budget adjustment that was proved by the board. Approving the litigation expenses to be funded out of reserves. So you will see the budget adjustment was in the mid 500,000s. And that is offset by some of the revenues that have come in. The one item that isn't recorded yet is also all of, we have a little bit of franchise fees for the month of June that we still don't have in the system yet, and we're expecting those franchise fees any day. So that will change the ending budget deficit a little bit in the administration. And then if we move into the enterprise funds, we first get the summary of all the funds together, which is water, wastewater, WRF operations, and WRF capital. And overall, looking at all the enterprise funds, there is a surplus of a million 17,000 and change. Again, that will be significantly rolled forward into the new fiscal year because there are a lot of capital projects that are not yet completed in all those different funds. The next group that you're going to see are strictly just the water fund and the two sub-funds of WRF capital and WRF operations. Their, excuse me, their overall surplus is 572,000. And then if we move to wastewater, which is two pages over, you will see wastewater has a surplus of 444,000. And then if we go into the detail of the water department. You'll see all of their revenues, all of their sales revenues for water sales. Those have already been posted. So what you see is our, you know, final year-end numbers, their actuals. And there could still be a little bit of property tax coming through on the water wastewater availability that we see posted, so that's still to come, a little bit of activity there. The salaries and benefits are complete, and then we will have several carryforwards that we'll talk about during the next item for the water fund. So their subtotal is on page five of seven. So water is ending the year with a surplus of $253,000. And so the next group we'll look at will be water WRF operations and WRF capital. Again, the revenues are actual for WRF operations. And then their end of the year surplus is listed on page three of five. Keep in mind, this surplus does not include the reserve amount of 553 that needs to carry forward. So when we do that, they will be in a deficit. At year end. WRF capital is on page one of three. It appears that it's a surplus because it's a positive number, but because there's no revenue here, it's really not a surplus. It's really a deficit. But there's no revenue to offset it, so because it's all from reserves. So this budget unit always looks a little odd because it's really the opposite of what it appears. It's not a surplus. And we will be carrying forward the professional services here, the section E or section seven ESA consulting contracts. The board just approved those in April and May of last, of this past fiscal year. So of course, those studies are not complete. So we'll see that moving forward as well as the trailer fill station did not get completed. So we'll see that coming forward as well. And then moving on to wastewater. Again, the services and sales, those are actual numbers. There still is possibly some property tax to come through as far as availability comes for wastewater. The salaries and benefits are complete. And then their bottom line total is on page three of six, and they're ending the year with a surplus of oh, sorry, it's page four of six with a surplus of 444,000. And several projects will need to come forward for wastewater as well because they're multi-year projects and they were not complete during the fiscal year. So then looking at the capital improvement projects. And when you look here at these sheets, the column that says FY project cost, those are the actual costs that occurred within the fiscal year. And you'll see that for, you know, we'll see that for the general fund products. We'll see that for wastewater on the next page and then water and WRF on the last page. Moving forward into the first quarter of next year, we're going to be creating a column at the request of the RNI committee to show a project life to date. And then we'll have a separate column for what is the current year cost, just so that it's just more apparent on where we are on the stage of the project. Because when you just see the current fiscal year cost, it's kind of hard to tell. You know, are we at the beginning of the cycle? Are we kind of towards the end of the cycle of the life of the project? So they've requested that that column be added. So we're going to work on getting, you know, we'll try to keep the format as, as if everybody's comfortable with it and is used to reading it in this format, and we'll just try to add a column in there for you. So you have that previous year's cost. But that is all we have for you on the quarterly report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Duffield, Mr. Seager.
Yeah, I guess I'll make this an observation as opposed to questions because I'm not sure how to ask the questions that I would really have. And we've got 60 pages of numbers here showing large surpluses, even though the revenues are generally behind the budgeted amounts. And you know, what, what this really begs for is the written plan and some kind of analysis as to how we track against what we planned to do for the year. If, if I just look at, at these enormous surpluses, my reaction is we didn't do what we set out to get done this year. And I, I don't know how to, how to answer that, that question about whether we, we did or, or didn't actually do what we set out to do. Partly because projects are multi-year and, and so we've got things that are in progress and we, you know, the, the actual timing of, of payments will change the surplus, you know, through the roll forwards. So you know, I, I just find it kind of frustrating to have 60 pages of numbers with, which don't really give me any information other than the fact that on a cash basis, we're, we've, we've piled up some, some surplus.
So I think when we look at the final budget, it'll help a little bit more. As I said, this quarterly report, we've, we've not done a fourth quarter report in the past. This is kind of something new. We're, we're looking at all the subcategories budget to actual. If we just lumped it into the final budget, you can't see the budget to actual. So I thought it might be more helpful for you to have, or the committee and the board to have this report that actually shows budget to actual. If we just do, if we do a comparative report for the final budget, what you lose is what the budget was versus what the actual was. You just get an actual column. So you know, I get what you're saying.
That's not my point. That's, that's not my point. My point is that, you know, in the fire department, we have a surplus of, of, what is it, $250,000 or something like that. Well, what did the fire department not do that they expected to do in the 2122 fiscal year? And I, there's, there's no way I can tease that out of the numbers.
So maybe I should have also included the attachment of the carryforwards in both packets because I have the carryforward. So you'll see when we talk about three B, what was not completed during the year.
Yeah, but you know, this is, this is where having a written plan and saying, we intended to do these things. We made partial progress on X. Or we never, we never got a chance to start on X because of some, you know, something that was an impediment. You know, because, you know, we could be underperforming. Or we could be doing exactly what we set out to do. And I just thought, I don't know how to tease that out, out of just numbers. You know, and it's, and having the carryforwards will help elucidate that. But in, you know, in reviewing the carryforwards, if capital project X was something that we intended to get done in the 2122 timeframe, but it's carried forward to 2023. You know, is that a matter of not having had enough resources to get the job done? Is that a matter of, of you know, losing focus? Is that a matter of contractors who weren't available? Is that a matter of, you know, changes, changes in priorities? I, you know, I, I just don't know how to, how to address those kinds of questions, even as we start looking at the, at the carryforwards. So, you know, my observation is the, the policy calls for a written plan and I, I believe it, it also called for some narrative that would address where we are versus the written plan. And, and I just thought, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to sound overly negative about what's been accomplished here. The reports you've put together are really great reports. So they're, they're a, a great foundation, but, but the, you know, I, I think in trying to assess the performance of the district for the fiscal year, there's more that we need.
Well, I usually don't talk about that with the committee. I talk about that with the board, and that's usually in our narrative attached to the final budget. It's, it's not usually in, unless we have a verbal discussion for finance committee. That's usually not our process, but I can make a note that next year, that's what you would prefer, the written plan, just like what we would take to the board.
That's what I would, that's what I prefer, sure. And I can't speak for the whole committee.
No, I just. Yes, Mira, yes. Just to, just to reiterate, I, I do think Ted's hitting a nail on the head there. I, and Pam, don't, don't get either Ted or I wrong. This is awesome report, much improvement over the years. So, but I think the narrative you're talking about, I, I would have, I would think it exists, or maybe it doesn't exist yet, but it will. Because there's got to be, I'm, I'm sure the board and the Cause there's got to be, I'm I'm sure the board and the GM would want to know and do know to some extent. What why things are they are, the way they are. But I think pulling that report forward to the finance committee would be a an improvement for next year. So I agree with Ted.
I made a note.
What it boils down to is an executive summary.
Which it sounds like Pam does, it's just, it's it's for the board.
Being addressed in a more narrative way and. With a focus to information that moves through the board on a regular basis.
Right, cause every, right, every quarter, we talk about what's been done and what hasn't been done. So this is kind of that recap at the very end of the year on where we're at. Cause we do talk about what's happened in each quarter as we move through the year.
Yeah, but the in talking about what's happened. It should also be tied back to what we intended. And that's that's. You know. Connecting connecting with the with the written plan as opposed to just the budget.
Okay. No, I understand exactly what you're saying, Ted and Mary, both. And there's an opportunity certainly to. Make it a more. Close circle. Process in terms of the intent and accomplishment portions of it. And. I I can see us moving toward that. I think that just as as a statement of what it's taken to get us to this point. And the kinds of. Things that have had to be accomplished over the last year, certainly. That. Being able to formulate that in a more. Defined way. And providing the kinds of things that you're talking to Ted. Are important and something to move toward. But I agree that. The information that's here is significantly improved to what we have been. And the idea of having. A fourth quarter report in this way to try to make sure that there was a tie between the end of the year. And what we've been moving to and not normally having that as part of our review process. Probably has highlighted exactly what you're talking to. So. Shall we do, would you, would the committee like to discuss it further or do you want to? Okay, is is there, is there anything else that you'd like to address as far as the fourth quarter report is concerned?
Well, I'll say the subtitles are very helpful. But then thank you for for incorporating that in the structure of the report. And I do agree that maybe not having quite so many subtotal totals would make the report a little easier to read. But it's a, it it really does help to to have that information, so. You know, thumbs up on that one.
So let me ask the question, Mr. Field. In terms of what will be being brought forward to the board. Generally, is that a function of it's? Incorporation and carryovers into the new fiscal year with the FY eighty, eighty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget presentation that will be going on. I'm not expecting that what you were looking to do was to provide a fourth quarter report to the board, is that a true statement or?
No, I plan on providing the part fourth quarter to the board.
I'm sorry, you will or?
I will, yes.
You will, okay.
And that way, when you look back at our website and you can look at the financial reports through the year. If you look back historically, you see report quarter one through three. But you never see quarter four, there's never been a quarter four report. You have to look at the final budget document of the next year to see. What the ending numbers were, but you lose the budget to actual. So this will be the first time that there is an actual fourth quarter standalone report solidified in the fiscal year.
And I think. And and numerically, that is in a position that we've been in before.
Right.
So that's the that's the positive movement. I think what we've been discussing really has more to do with being able to express that. Statement and position in a narrative way to some what the accomplishments during the year have been. Against what we were intending initially with with a fresh budget that we launch with. So that's potentially the next movement of of growth in the process. It's been being compiled over the last couple of years to get us to this point. With a lot of effort by Mr. Field and others, so it is appreciated, Pam, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, as far as how we handle this agenda item. Because it's being. Recommended that or it is being stated that we make a recommendation to the board. For the receipt and filing of the fourth quarter budget report. As the board will be receiving this fourth quarter report. What's the committee's take on how they would like to move that recommendation forward on this item? Is it, is it a matter of receiving and filing this report? And they'll be getting the presentation of the fourth quarter report at the board, yes, Ted?
I'll I'll make a motion that we recommend this fourth quarter report be provided to the board of directors. Along with a narrative linking accomplishments to the. Original plan for the year.
Okay, so you're saying you would want to have that as part of this report or making that as a recommendation? For going forward?
The. The recommendation. Or the the motion was to make it to recommend that. The fourth quarter report be provided to the board. But my motion went one step further. Asking for a narrative report, you know, narrative that links the. Actual accomplishments to the original plan.
I'll include that within the. Usually I am in the in the report to the board, I will say that the finance committee approved by whatever vote they approved by. And any recommendations over and above that that they make, so I'll include that recommendation in the report to the board.
All right, I'll second that. All right. So we'll do rope hole on that, so Mr. Seager. Ms. Martin.
I.
Mr. Corn.
I.
Ms. Christman.
I.
And Ms. McDowell.
I.
All right, and that motion is passed on a vote of five zero. Thank you all. So we move on to agenda item three B and Ms. Duffield, again, if you'd introduce the agenda item, please.
Sure, so item three B is discussion and consideration of the final budget fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And approve recommendations to the board. So this is the final budget in this. And remember, the preliminary budget is to adopt the revenue and expenditure plan for the new fiscal year. And the final budget process is to record what has happened and and how the prior fiscal year has ended. And what carryforwards and encumbrances need to come forward from twenty-one, twenty-two. Into the new budget of twenty-two, twenty-three. So we've already gone over where the surplus and deficit of all the different departments and funds. And now we'll talk about each department and fund and what we need to move forward from one year to the next. The actual budget pages that you're seeing are actually the exact same budget that you saw for the preliminary. If I reprint these reports, I can't eliminate the current activity that's happened in July. So I just wanted it to be a clean report of the new budget and I could not get that out of Tyler. So I need to work on how I can do that without getting the July activity in there. Cause I want it to be clean in a budget document, not not a budget to actual report. So our revenue and expense plan is exactly the same as what we presented to the committee on the board. Back in June. So if we look towards the very end parts. It's way towards the very end of your packet, it is a reserve for encumbrance requests. If we go through that document. The first few items that you see are related to the fire department. So if you look at the budget request from the fire. Which is on page four or five of their document. They are requesting a sixty-one thousand dollar deficit. In their budget request, and that is the same, like I said, is what was approved by the board in June. In addition to that, they're requesting that the fuel station computer replacement. Which was incomplete during the fiscal year be carried forward. The radio system upgrade, which is offset by a grant from the county. You'll see that below in this grouping of the general funding conference requests. So that is a net of zero to the deficit of the fund. And that those radios just were purchased in the mid of July. They were on backorder for a a really long time, almost an entire year, because the products were not available. And the fire department has just received them and they need to be programmed. And then we'll be submitting those final bills over to the county and we will get our reimbursement for the grant. I think it's looking around twenty-five thousand dollars in total is what will be spent. And then we will get again that completely offset by the grant. The replacement of the F. Three fifty utility truck, that was postponed due to the unavailability of vehicles during this year. It's really hard to get vehicles manufactured, parts aren't available or they're just on such a waiting list that we can't get them. And then the other thing that the former fire chief just wanted to hold off on that for. Is because they were having significant. Staffing issues in fire and he was concerned about exceeding the budget in staffing. So he held off purchasing that for a couple of different reasons. That again would also be offset by a loan. So depending who we finance that vehicle through, we might see a debt service payment in twenty-two, twenty-three. Or the first debt service might not be till twenty-three, twenty-four, depending who we finance with. The next item is the security system entrance gates. So those were purchased, there's still a little bit of programming that still has to take place. To complete that purchase, and so we should be seeing that again in late July or early August. Those final bills coming forward, so that's why you see that small amount. What was put in the budget, I believe, was twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. The Zolex series E K G machine, this has a grand offset. And during the budget discussions of twenty-one, twenty-two, the fire department committed to not purchasing that. Until they received the grant and they still don't have official word if they're going to receive the grant or not. So if the grant does not get approved, then the fire department would need to come back to the board. To request authorization to purchase through reserves or postpone till another fiscal year. So that takes care of all of the fire department. Carryforward requests. And then moving on to. Facilities, oh yes, there is one facilities project, I was forgetting there was one. There's still a little bit of funding for the EV station installation in the facilities and resources budget. Initial project has been constructed and those costs have been recorded. You know, on the three A that we were talking about earlier in the third, on the fourth quarter report. But there is still a little bit of budget remaining. We are moving this forward because the the actual EV station needs to down a couple parking spaces. So there will need to be probably a budget adjustment done as well in the new year. When all of those costs are known, right now, they're not known. So that is the one facilities that will carry forward. And moving on to. The press department, there's two projects that were not completed. And that was the East Branch Restroom Project that's still in process. So you'll see the budget move forward along with a few lines down. You'll see the Prop sixty-eight per capita grant. Funds that also need to move forward with that project. Also, the skate park is improved and you'll see that offset just by reserves. Cause that is the annual budget that the board approved moving forward for the skate park. Moving on to administration, there's one item in administration that's requested to move forward. And that is the professional service agreement for reviewing the fees and charges. And that has not been done over the last fiscal year, but we do need to review all the fees and charges that are non-utility billing related. And that includes the vets hall and that also includes developing a new fee structure for the EV station. Cause we do need to get those rates in place so that we can start having the EV station in use. So that concludes all of the general fund. And so overall, the general fund had a deficit also. Was there a question of three hundred and twenty-five thousand? And then moving in to the new year, there'll be an additional two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. In reserves that is requested to move into the new fiscal year. And then moving to the enterprise funds, we'll first talk about water. Unless there's any questions before we move to the enterprise funds.
I don't see any Mr. Field.
Okay. So the enterprise fund, so the water department. They're requesting several items to move forward, most of them are capital equipment. So the covering for the sheltering of equipment in the modular office were not purchased this fiscal year. The SS two electrical panel upgrade, they have to order some parts. And they're having a lot of trouble getting those electronic components, so that is still. They're still pursuing that, but it is not complete at this time. The Stewart Street Tank Rehabilitation. So that is tied to a grant from. I think it's the Army Corps of Engineers that is supporting it, it's a federal grant. So it's kind of strange, so we've had. This project for the Stewart Street Tank on the books for a couple of years. this project for the Stewart Street Tank on the books for a couple of years. And we did have an approved grant, but we haven't received the granting documents in twenty one, twenty two to actually offset the cost of this project. So we finally received those documents recently and we didn't have time to get it into last year's budget. So we've actually added the grant offset to fiscal year twenty two, twenty three's budget, so though we don't see a carryforward grant offset. If you look at that, the budget for twenty two, twenty three, there is a grand offset, they're not aligned and we like to usually align the grant with the expenditure in the same fiscal year, but this just the timing just did not happen correctly for that. Also in the water department is the water meter replacement project. That again has not been completed, they're actively working on some quotes for different vendors and the types of service that's happening, so we're hoping that in the next couple of months, the whole package goes to the board and we can start working on that. Water meter replacement project. The skate improvement project is continually ongoing, so that will generally roll forward from year to year. Radio Grunt's pump station has not been completed. And the replacement of the F one fifty has been delayed due to the unavailability of vehicles. So then moving on to WRF operations, the only thing in there is the carryforward of the unused two months set aside from nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one, and then twenty twenty two. And remember, in the new fiscal year, we added a line item in the budget for transparency. Just because in the new Tyler reporting, I can't show you reserves like we could on paper. So we've added that to be transparent, so you can see what's happened over the years. And what has been unused in reserves and the WRF operations. For WRF capital, we talked about it a little bit ago, the trailer fill station was not completed during the fiscal year. So we will be carrying forward that project. As well as all of the new consultant agreements that were approved in April and May by the board for the section seven ESA component of the CDP permit, so all those will come forward. Moving on to wastewater. Again, we have these lift station improvements, they're kind of like skater and water, we keep a budget out there for improvements that happen when they would need to replace pumps and whatnot through the year, so we kind of have this rolling lift station improvement project going. The security improvements at the plant were not complete, so those will move forward. And then the eastern eastern clarifier replacing of the drive chain, that was not complete as well. And the tractor has been built. But we're still waiting for all of the particular bucket and different accessories that go on that trailer to be received by the vendor that built the tractor and added to our truck or tractor. So we anticipate that'll be available, all those parts will be available sometime in August to September. And then we'll be able to purchase that tractor. The replacement of the transport van to carry the video camera that we purchased two years ago. We were just told in the middle of June that our order had been canceled. We had had our order with Ford for approximately, I don't know, eleven months, I believe. And we were told that now they can't get the parts, there are certain things they can't get to manufacture the vehicle and our twenty twenty two order has been canceled. They have given us a quote of around forty five thousand, twenty two, twenty three. So we're hoping that we will be able to acquire that vehicle sometime in the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. But at this point, we're kind of waiting. Superintendent, Mr. Alchen and I have had a conversation. And he's going to explore, you know, seeing if there's any opportunities out there to purchase something used. So if he can find something viable that's used for this purchase. We would bring that back to the board for purchasing of used equipment, since we don't have a policy per se to purchase used equipment, we would bring that to the board for evaluation, so. He's gonna kind of think outside the box a little bit on how he can get this purchase completed. And not just continue to wait another year and have our order be canceled again and still not get his, the van that needs to be replaced. So again, those are all of our carryforward requests that we're asking for moving from twenty two to twenty three. All of your budget pages are like they were. Recapping where we are for the enterprise funds. The water, WRF operations and capital. We have a surplus of five hundred and seventy two thousand and we're requesting one point nine move forward. So a lot of reserves will have to come forward for those reserve designation requests. And for wastewater, they ended with a surplus of four hundred and forty four thousand and change and they're requesting three hundred and twenty nine come forward. We decided to not move forward. The two placeholders in wastewater that were for the debt service. If you remember last year, we had two ECMs that we outlined and those were kind of the placeholders around four hundred thousand for the debt service for the IGA project. We decided to not move those forward from year to year because all of the project costs and anything that's owed to PG&E will be funded as part of the IGA loan sale, so. We will just come back to the board when we know what the debt service will be and when we know when those debt service payments will begin. At this point, we just don't have that information, so that will come back to the board at a later date. The very last part of your packet is the reserve worksheet and it is actually the very last page. And so this again just recaps actuals for June thirty, twenty twenty one. What the actual balances were in the funds. You know, what what the project carryforwards plus the year end activity was and what's happening in the new fiscal year. The very bottom of your page shows the interfund loan amounts. And then we give the estimated total of each each separate fund. And then water has the subfunds. So that concludes my presentation, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Duffield. Any questions? Chrisman? And yeah, sorry, go ahead, and you're still muted.
There you go.
At least I didn't swear, since you all can read lips, I think. Thank you for this, Pam, I have a question about the capital improvements project, projects. I believe that Alex Handler's said in his presentation to us that the the list of the, 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 the list of projects totaling about twelve million dollars. Had a price that was good through, I want to say, the end of last year. And it was in the process of being updated and those numbers are still the same here. I assume that if you had a, a, a status on that updating process, that would have been included here, but I thought I should ask that question.
That's correct, so if you look at the date when this was prepared, it was prepared on June ninth. And I were expecting, I think the first few days of August, we're expecting the updated numbers from PG&E. And then those updated numbers will be used for our financing of the projects, but at this point, I, my last day in the office was the twenty second and on the twenty second, we did not have those numbers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? So it had, just to clarify, some of the, the kind of narrative that Ms. Duffield had relayed during her review of the carryforwards and the budget requests and so forth. That in in its identification is the kind of thing that you're talking about as far as having an executive summary that more specifically explains. Yeah, the actions.
It's, it's, it's very helpful. The the, the one piece and, and this was part of, part of the narrative. Or part of what, what Pam was, was describing to us. Is tying things back to what we intended to do and I'll, I'll use, I'll use a big example. Did we intend in the twenty one, twenty two timeframe to have actually completed the financing of the IGA projects? You know, we haven't. And you know, I, I think, I think that there was every intention to do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been trying to price everything as of last December. But it, it's just dragged on for, for longer than, than we expected. That's something that, that, you know. If, if my assumption is correct, should be part of a year end summary to talk about what did we intend to get done and what did we actually do? I think you know, general statements that we were unable to find vehicles. And that, that impacted three different departments. That's, that's a, that would be a very clear statement of, you know, unavailable resources. You know. What progress did we intend to make towards securing the operating permit for the WRF during the twenty one, twenty two timeframe? And how did, how did we, how did we do compared to where we expected to be? My, you know, my feeling is that the in-stream flow study work has taken longer than we expected it to take. And so we're not as far along on that project as, as we had hoped to be. The, these are, these are some of the kinds of things that I think the, you know, in, as a retrospective. Looking back on the year. It's, it's part of the, the report card of how the, how the district did compared to what it expected to do. So that, you know. I, I, I hope those, those kinds of examples help to clarify what I'm talking about.
And there's some, it's interesting there too, though, is there's some overlap in that in, in terms of just an overall summation of the performance of the district business versus something that's specifically budget driven.
Well, and that's, and that's where you know, to me, a budget is a, is a part of a plan. And we, you know, it's, it's the financial expression of what the plan is. But by itself, it only communicates a piece of the picture. Of how we're doing compared to what we planned to do.
No, I'm in agreement with you, I'm just, I was just making an observation.
Yeah.
That the, the kind of thing you're talking about is a more overarching document and it maybe talks to something beyond what's represented as far as the delivery of the budget information, financial information. Not that it shouldn't accompany it at potentially at the same time, but that that it's isn't necessarily the, the, the budgetary that carries all of the burden of making all of those points or explanations towards plan and execution.
As a former CFO, my job wasn't just worrying about budgets. It was worrying about the performance of the organization versus what we expected the organization to do. And you know. If, if projects, it's, it's a little different in, in this particular context, but in the kinds of company, companies I was associated with, if, if projects were delayed. That would delay revenue, which would impact the value of, of the company. You know, and so it's, it's really important to, to track what you know, what you get done versus what you expected to do. In, in this context, it is a little bit different, but to the extent that the IGA projects, for instance, have been delayed, we you know, we are probably incurring higher costs than we need to, than we would incur if we were farther down the, the road. We expose ourselves to inflation in the cost of the projects. We expose ourselves to higher interest rates because of the interest rate environment changing. There, there are a lot of implications for time as well as dollars in, in these things and, and so it's you know, if, if you want to measure the effectiveness of an organization, I, I think we have to, to have a you know, tighter wrap around the, the execution of plans.
Anyone else have anything to bring forward or discuss? Okay, well, um, we are still, well, let me see. We appear to have two attendees, but probably neither would be in a position of addressing questions as one is a director and, and the other is a staff member, so. Okay, well, then what we have is an agenda item for consideration and recommendation to the Board of Directors regarding the final budget data and any recommendations to the Board of Directors. So anyone might put forward a motion? Mr. Secret?
Yes, I move that we recommend the final budget package as presented to us to the Board of Directors at their August, mid-August meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second, Ms. Meyer? All right. Second, we'll move to we'll move to the vote on the motion then, Mr. Secret?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Corn. I'm sorry, I was, I was looking down and you're muted, so I didn't hear, okay, thank you.
There, I.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. McDowell?
I think she disappeared.
Lost her video.
Ms. Crispin?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, looks like coming back. All right, there we go. All right. So we're taking a vote on this and you are the remaining individual. So so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. We lost connection there for a while.
Okay, we've got you back. All right. So the recommendation and approval moving forward from the, well, let's see, how was it? How was it phrased, Ms. Meyer?
I, I moved that we recommend the budget be presented to the board.
Okay. No recommendation for the committee other than just the presentation?
I think that's what we were asked to do.
Yes. Okay.
Just, just for clarity.
Vote is five zero.
Yes, right. Just for clarity, I'm, I'm what staff recommended was the final budget and reserve designations. So are you guys okay if I add that into the minutes that it includes the reserve designation since that's what staff recommended?
I, I'm certainly okay with that. That's
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured. I just thought I'd clarify.
So acknowledgement from the other committee members? That's satisfactory to do that. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, well, um. Thank you certainly, Ms. Duffield for an hour's worth of delivery of very detailed and specific information. Mr. Corn?
Yes, I do have a question for Ms. Duffield. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about reserves and what reserve we should have. I just did a quick calculation here. If, if I was anywhere close to accurate our, our budgeted revenue CCSD total is roughly $12 million. Our budget the reserve budget is 7,518,000. So is it accurate to assume that we've got approximately a 63% reserve based on our projected revenue?
But that probably does not include all the carrier arbers if you're looking at that. Because if you think of we spent everything in 2223, where would we be? You know, that's not going to happen because most of our large dollar projects are still multi-year.
Okay.
But you always have to keep in mind, you know, that we have those multi-year projects that are ongoing. Which create a high reserve. You know, things largely like in water become unspent because we're not having those completion of those capital projects, like the water meter project, for instance, you know, that's a large project. And when that is finally completed, you'll probably see a very large difference in their budget to actual.
So I think very, very quickly, looking at the page on encumbrance requests, it's something like $2.6 million that would be funded from reserves.
Right, that's quite substantial.
Right. So if we, if we subtract those carry forwards, the cost of those from the 7,518,000, that's what our, our reserve actually should be if all of that got spent.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The only additional item that's left on the agenda then is for future agenda items. Do any of the committee members have any future agenda items? All right. Seeing none, then we've finished the business of the committee for today and can call for adjournment unless there's anything anyone has before we leave. Nope. All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that we moved through this quickly and appreciate your inputs. And your support in the review of the information. And thank you, Ms. Duffield and, and Ms. Fritz. I hope you had an opportunity get a full exposure to the budgeting process.
Get it all in and I'm taking notes to ask.
Okay.
To your text.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Excellent. Thank you all again, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your day.
You too.
Bye.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.